Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metz Childers. Trustee Appenheim.
Here.
We have a forum.
Could all rise and I would like to ask Officer Socarellis, Sergeant Petterelli, and Sergeant Tokars to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is awesome.
Isn't it? I love this when everybody comes.
You got your oaths?
No.
So where are the, where are the oaths of office? I've got to ask Chief or...
Deputy Chiefs have them, they'll hand them over when it's time.
Okay, it is time. So now, I think most of you are here for a terrific occasion. We take great pride, and I know the department takes great pride, in promoting folks from time to time up the ranks in, in our wonderful police department. We're going to, in just a couple minutes, promote Officer Socarellis to Sergeant, Sergeant Petterelli to Commander, and Sergeant Tokars to Commander. So with each one, I'm going to come down, we'll do the oaths. So Brian, where, where did he go? Where'd he go?
He was here.
Oh, yeah.
Just a couple of comments. John's got some intro.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you. I haven't filled a room like this in quite a while, I'm not used to it.
And you're going to take advantage.
I'll take advantage, obviously you've got about fifteen or twenty minutes of this before we go on and on. Just a couple of comments before I turn it over to the DCs for, for their comments and the process of swearing everybody in. We're here tonight to recognize the promotion and advancement of three department members, as you had mentioned, Mayor. Kind of an unusual time, it's rare that we have three people promoted on the same night. Tonight's the night, and we can see it in the people that are here attending. All three of these promotions are well-earned and well-deserved. Each of these officers collectively and individually are an integral part of what the department does, and we greatly appreciate what they do on a regular basis, and we wouldn't be here tonight with, with mentioning the outstanding job they do and the fact that they earned it to get here to, tonight. They're the future leaders, and I'd like to thank them for what they do. I'd like to welcome, as you can see, their family, their friends, several retirees are in the room. Greatly appreciated by the people being sworn in, greatly appreciated by other members of the department, but their, the support has been there, and they will speak more to that as they move into the future as the leaders of the department. So with that, we will turn that over to, how do I go with Budby? See first?
He's coming.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. We'll do ladies first.
Joanna.
And just so, I, I don't know, but would you introduce everybody that is, that is here for you?
My parents, Cosette and Tony, my sister and her husband, Alenia and Nick, and my cousin Peggy, I have my Aunt Jenny, my Aunt Peggy, my Angela, Nick's mom, my sister Anna, I have my fiance Mike, his parents, my in-laws, my Highland Park girls, from Highland Park, I have Morton Grove here at Evanston.
Wow.
Who else? Neely, of course, Waukegan, and Peter, April.
That's wonderful.
Thought I had more time. All right, just a little bit about Joanna. Joanna was hired on April 3rd of 2017 as a police officer. While on patrol, Division Joanna became a certified dare officer, social media coordinator, and helped organize successful events like the Citizens Police Academy, Lutheran General Toy Drive, Books With Badges, Cram the Cruiser, and the First Coffee with a Cop event. Joanna has had a positive working relationship with fellow employees and strives to create camaraderie among the staff. She planned the first employee holiday party in 2019 and has become an annual tradition. Joanna also serves as a department peer support group member. Joanna was assigned to the Investigations Division in twenty, June of 2020, where she became a juvenile officer, evidence technician, investigator with the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force, and a member of the North half Task Force. We look forward to the energy enthusiasm Joanna will bring to the new role as a sergeant and congratulate her on the next steps in her career.
Before I swear, you want, was there anyone you forgot?
Get another brother Darryl.
I, Joanna Socarellis. Have been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
Have been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
In the village of Deerfield.
In the village of Deerfield.
In the counties of Lake and Cook.
In the counties of Lake and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Deerfield.
The ordinances of the village of Deerfield.
And the rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police.
And the rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police.
Deerfield Police. And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Awesome.
Don't mess with him.
Yeah, really. Better watch it.
We need to make this magnetic.
Really briefly, I want to say thank you to the Chief, our administration, the Board, I really appreciate this opportunity. Every day I come to work with a smile on my face, and I try to be positive, and I think that is reflected. I'm really excited for this opportunity, and I appreciate everybody in the room that is here to support Steve, Brad, and myself, from our staff, from outside agencies, our families. I really appreciate my family so much, they are the reason I am who I am today, my in-laws, my fiance. I'm excited to marry him. I'm really excited for this opportunity, I'm going to try my hardest. Thank you.
There's so many, we don't even know who's next. Brad, let's just stand up. I think this is going to be sort of the same as Joanna, but if you would introduce everybody to it.
Sure, here are my, my family, my wife Gina, my daughters Kaylee and Emma, my father-in-law and mother-in-law Gina and Lori, my mother Maria, my sister and her family, my brother-in-law David, my sister Nujette, her children Hayden and Eileen, my brother Paul, my best friend Billy, my sister-in-law Stephanie, her husband Mark, and my new goddaughter Gianna, and my cousin Ronnie, good friend Joan. Appreciate you.
Awesome. I don't even think we made it to the hallways people either, so. All right, a little bit about Brad. Brad regained, began his employment with the Deerfield Police Department on September 27th, 2010. During his patrol, time on patrol, Brad served as a dare officer, dare program coordinator, bike officer, FTO, and he was elected by his peers to serve on the Deerfield Pension Board. Brad was assigned to the Investigations Division in 2015, where he received specialized training in numerous fields including sexual assault investigations, elder abuse, and financial crimes. Brad was promoted to Sergeant in July 2019, where he reinvigorated the Citizens Police Academy, ran the bike unit, facilitated the police fire home run derby, and the No Shave November. He also created and ran the department's Junior Police Academy alongside SRO Maldonado. The Citizens Police Academy and Junior Police Academy are both very successful thanks to Brad, and the department receives numerous positive comments about both programs in recent community surveys. We recognize and commend Brad for his hard work and dedicated service to the village, the department, and the community, and congratulate him on a well-deserved promotion.
I, Brad Socarellis. Have been appointed to the Office of Police Commander.
Have been appointed to the Office of Police Commander.
In the village of Deerfield.
The village of Deerfield.
In the counties of Lake and Cook.
Counties of Lake and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Deerfield.
Orders of the village of Deerfield.
And the rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police Department.
And those regulations of the Deerfield.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
The office.
The office.
Of Police Commander.
Police Commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. I just want to say thank you very quick, Chief, the Deputy Chiefs, Mayor, Board of Trustees, my family, and I want to thank the patrol officers as well, that's the only reason why we're here. Patrol is the heart, beating the heartbeat of a department, and we can't do anything without them, so I want to thank them first and foremost. But more so, I just really want to thank especially my wife. She puts up with everything, me being gone and, and working all the long hours, I do appreciate her, because without her and my family, I'm not here, so thank you. Good job.
Just a fun fact, the star that was just put on his chest was by his father, who was the former chief of police.
You just covered it. Thank you.
All right, last but not least, Steve? Would you like to introduce who's here with you tonight?
I've got my lovely wife Jill, my son Drew here tonight, I've got my mom and my father, Evo and Teresa, my sister Sarah and her daughter Leila, and my son's girlfriend Grace showing up also. I've got some really good friends from back in the day that's showing up, from the old school, back in 99, I got hired. A lot of family here, I really appreciate you all showing up, and my new family, the Dispatch Center has shown up, too, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so our last promotion tonight, Steve Petterelli. Steve was hired as a part-time dispatcher with the village of Deerfield in August 1997, and was sworn in as a full-time police officer in February of 2000. Steve displayed a proficiency with computers and technology early on, and maintained the department's first webpage, yes, first webpage. Created department PowerPoint presentations, recriminates, and even the annual report. Steve's extremely knowledgeable in photography and video editing software, so he became the unofficial department photographer, and has created and been a part of many retirement videos over the years. In 2002, Steve was assigned to the undercover Meg Unit, receiving the State of Illinois Meg Directors Award in 2004, and the Policy Board Award in 2003 and 2005. In 2005, Steve returned to patrol, where he became a dare officer, field training officer, evidence technician, and a member of the recruitment team. In 2015, December, he was assigned to the Investigations Unit, where he became a juvenile officer and cellphone forensic software expert. In 2017, Steve was promoted to Sergeant and reassigned to the patrol unit. As a patrol sergeant, Steve assisted with the research and implementation of the agency's Starcom radios and the drone program. In July of 2023, Steve assumed the responsibilities of Director of Communications while remaining primarily in patrol, and moving full-time into communications at the beginning of this year, and he's done an excellent job with the transition. So with this, we recognize Steve's loyalty and dedication to the department, and congratulate him on this well-deserved promotion.
I, Steve Petterelli.
Have been appointed to the Office of Police Commander.
Have been appointed to the Office of Police Commander.
In the village of Deerfield.
Village of Deerfield.
In the counties of Lake and Cook.
Counties of Lake and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Deerfield.
Orders of the village of Deerfield.
And the rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
For the Office of Police Commander.
For the Office of Police Commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Should I make this magnetic?
First and foremost, like I said, I'd like to thank my, my wife Jill, my son Drew, big supporters of me throughout the years, my mom and dad, my sister, my little niece over there. The patrol division, like Brad said, is a huge part of my career, I spent many years in there, they are the nucleus of the PD, and I appreciate them. What else do I got back here? I got a lot of retirees that showed up, and I'm so humbled with that, because in 1997, I was just a young punk college kid coming in, and they threw me, I was doing my internship here, and they threw me with this guy named Paul, and they said, "He's with you today." And Paul rolled his eyes, threw something up in the air, and I jumped in the car with him, and we've been friends ever since. So he's here with his, his wife and his daughter Natalie, and his good friend Billy, whom I really appreciate that they showed up. Rand Rwell, Rick Wilk, Ee Magow, and those were all my bosses back when I first started, and I tried to emulate their traits and their qualities here at the police station. They made a tremendous impact on me over the years, so I'm very grateful that they're here. My new dispatch family, Des, Justin, Kaylee, they're all showing up here, and I got someone watching me on the, on the monitors here from the Dispatch Center, and I appreciate everything you guys have done for me so far, and I'm looking to continue to be your leader here at the Police Department. So thank you all, thank you Mayor, thank you country, thank you trustees, appreciate it.
To Sergeant Socarellis, Commander Petterelli, and Commander Tokars, we're very proud of you, and we value what you do for our community. Not only do we do that, 120 or 50 people here, they do too. And you said something that someone impacted your life, we'll think of all the people that all of you have impacted, and those are the folks behind you, and we thank you for your service.
Great job.
One more round of applause. We'll give a minute or two for the room to clear.
Thanks, Steve, thanks, Brad, thanks, guys, great job, great job.
Of course.
Look, this one, we got to run away.
Oh, that's okay, we'll take her. We'll take her.
I know, I love it. I love it.
Couldn't we like hire babies to come, just at many of our meetings, we could rent...
Me really proud of.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation, the National Hispanic Heritage Month, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation? So, of approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Minutes of the previous meeting, August 26, 2024, our committee of a whole, and September 3rd, 2024, our Board of Trustees meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bills and payroll.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now is the time where we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? We did get one email from Tracy Merrill that was sent to us at 4:33 this afternoon. She is unable to attend the meeting. I will briefly summarize it, and then we can move on to see if there are any other comments after that.
And was it sent to all the trustees, Your Honor?
It was.
Okay.
So all of you have a copy of it. She's offering public comment for tonight on a non-agenda item, she's unable to attend, so therefore, her email, she wanted to know, among other things, whether integrity plays a role in our decision to allow Polte Homes to move forward with a project that she is saying in this email will negatively impact property values and devastate the environment. She wants us to explain our integrity, or how our integrity guided our actions, and she has said that silence is not an option, in that we, whoever, in this email, we won't settle for the lack of accountability, in that we need to know how integrity factored into our decision-making. I'm summarizing the email, you guys can read it on your own, or if you haven't already. Are there any other emails that we got on non-agenda items other than this email from Tracy?
David, we got nothing else, right?
Okay. We'll now move on to the consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda. Item 9490, sorry, 2497, a resolution approving a consent decree relating to 755 Kipling, and a resolution granting a four-month extension on the building permit for 937, 936 West Cliff Lane, and the approval of an enforcement agreement. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, or offer a comment on either of these two matters? Again, the addresses are 75, 755 Kipling, 936 West Cliff. Yes, sir. And ma'am, please, introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Walts, so I'm here for the second issue related to 936 West Cliff.
Ashley, if you wouldn't mind, maybe tell me...
Sure.
Yeah.
Taller, so there we go. Ashley Walts, again. I just wanted to make a brief statement before we address the agenda item. Since the last meeting we had with the, with the Board, on June 17th, we've made a lot of progress on the, the house, the inside of the house is largely complete. We are pending some final cosmetic touches and, and final cleanup. The outside of the property is also moving quickly now, just within the last couple of weeks, we've completed the storm sewer work, the water main service, which I know is a requirement for occupancy, that's being connected tomorrow. We've completed initial grading, patios and sidewalks have started, and those are progressing very quickly. And then we have sod expected to be laid down by the end of the month. So all in all, we're expecting, our target is to move in by early October, and so I just wanted to provide that brief update for context, as many of you are, you just might not be aware of what the house, the home looks like on the inside, or even on the outside as of late. And then lastly, I did want to say thank you to the trustees and to the Mayor, we greatly appreciate the support thus far, the permanent extensions, and just working with us, I think we're all motivated to get this house complete, and we're very close to the finish line, so I just wanted to say thank you and provide those comments.
Thank you, and we are optimistic, cautiously optimistic, as I'm sure you are too.
Yes.
Thank you for updating us.
Thank you.
Is there, did you want to say anything, sir?
No.
She said it all, okay.
Smart.
Any other comment on this one? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so, Ashley, if you have any questions about this, talk to staff afterwards, but the consent agenda was two items, one, one of which was a resolution granting a four-month extension at 936 West Cliff, and an enforcement agreement, which I think you, you're familiar with, so. We have no old business, new business. Item 2490, a resolution authorizing a contract with the Jaskula, I can't pronounce it.
Jaskolka.
Jaskolka, thank you, Jaskolka, Termined Strategic Communications for Crisis Communications. David?
Hello, yes, I had to have them pronounce that for me in our, in our interview meeting. But we did look at multiple firms and found them to be the best suited to work for us. They have a long-term relationship with District 113, they've provided similar services for the village of Glenview, and nothing but good things to say about them and their team. And I just want to point out, we don't have, there's no crisis we're trying to get ahead of, except the unexpected. You know, a boil order, cyber threat, public safety issue, things happen, we need to have a work plan, so we're able to commute with you guys, with our other stakeholders, and with our residents, and maintain our credibility throughout that process, and have somebody, you know, get that down on paper and work with us. As part of the contract, there will be three, what do we call them?
Scenarios.
Scenarios, where those will be chosen by staff after a couple of meetings, I'm sure boil order will be on there, like what exactly to do, what steps to take when you first learn, who to tell, and will also include things like what is your role in communicating that, so we'll bring that back to you, because we know people will be calling you and looking for guidance on that, and I just don't want you to say check the website all the time. You know, so this is going to be really grateful for, helpful for all departments, really, and it'll be a full team effort to get over the finish line. The contract price is $30,000, and I would like to introduce Jessica Smith from JT to give us a little presentation.
Thank you, David, nice job.
Well, wait for the technology to work. Good evening, thank you so much for having us this evening. JT, easier to say, easier to remember. As David said, I'm Jessica Smith, I'm a Senior Vice President with the firm, I've been with JT for 20 years, I do a lot of our crisis communication planning work, as well as advising clients during an issue or crisis. Just a little background on us, we're a Chicago-based firm with about 20 people, who, got to remember to advance the slides, our core practice areas are public affairs, issues management, and crisis communications. We are familiar with your community, having done a lot of projects with District 113 and 109 over the years, both reactive and proactive. A lot of my clients include municipalities, libraries, park districts, and public school districts. Issues in JT, that JT has worked on over the years, we have a smattering of them up there, but it really has helped, as we've helped these organizations navigate these different issues, it really is the background that we bring into this crisis planning as well. I'll be a core member of the team, joining me will be my colleague Holly Barteky, who's an Executive Vice President at JT. Together, her and I do a lot of this kinds of work. Holly's background, she couldn't be here tonight, however, her background is in community colleges, she also was an elected school board member in the... She also was an elected school board member in the south suburbs. I've been with the firm 20 years, as I said, but I'm a Boomerang employee. When I left, I went in-house with high school District 214, so both of us have worked both for and in public bodies. We understand the complexity of the issues and challenges that you face every day and are oftentimes helping navigate through those. Talking a little bit about the plan that we'll develop, this plan is going to be highly customized to you and your organization in Deerfield. I have up here the components of it, I'm glad to talk about any but three in particular I really want to call out. One is the key audiences and recommended communication protocols. We're going to help understand, first of all, what, what communication protocols are already in place and help put some guardrails around when and how to communicate when an issue arises, so that you have a roadmap to use if something comes up. We're also going to look at the media protocols and the digital media protocols, because a lot of times we know in a crisis, you're looking back at those policies and referring to them that publicly, because that's what's helping you navigate an issue. And then, as David mentioned, we'll work with his team and all of you to develop three customized scenarios. And what we do is we develop the scenario, and then we also develop a suite of templated communication materials. So a lot of times, this might include a statement, talking points, website content, social media posts. Of course, if one of these issues actually arise, we're going to have to go back and really look at them to customize them to the issue, but at least it gives you a starting place to go from. And our, so our process is starting with a really in-depth discovery session with your team to understand what are the communication protocols in place now, what are the issues keeping you up at night that we should think about for those scenarios? And then we go back and we draft and we develop the scenario, we'll present it to the staff for their feedback, we'll work with all of you to determine the best way to present it or submit it for, for the village overall, and we'll do a training with staff, where we'll make sure everyone comes together and understands their role within, if crisis occurs, so it doesn't just sit on a, on a shelf somewhere. And as part of that, we usually do a simulation, where we take one of those scenarios and we sort of play it out and, and sort of health, have the staff go through the exercise of what would I communicate when and how, so they get the sort of rhythm of it. We did add to this, so Holly and I have created a training called Communicating Through a Crisis: Smart Strategies for Tough Times. What this is, is a, is a half-day workshop. Typically, one municipal entity, whether it's the village or a school district, convenes all of the partners, police, fire, parks, library, everybody, where we do an upfront session on sort of how to communicate during a tough crisis, should something happen that impacts your entire village. And then we create a scenario and sort of take everyone through an iterative process to give people an opportunity to work together. We have included that as a pro bono component to this work. We typically do the morning session pro bono for those groups that convene, the afternoon we typically charge a fee for, that we've included in here, if you would like to do that as well. Our timeline is about nine to 10 weeks, about eight weeks to complete the entire process and the plan. So if we start October 1, which was the date we sort of had targeted, that will get us a little bit after Thanksgiving, but before the end of year holidays, to have this complete. And really, our goal is to have the plan done within eight weeks, that nine to 10 is the scheduling of the training and the simulation. We'll try to schedule that early in the process, because we know scheduling is always what kind of can hold things up sometimes. With that, I'm glad to take questions, but we are very grateful for the opportunity and look forward to working with, with the staff and with all of you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. One of the things I hear a lot, I'm sure my colleagues do as well, from constituents, from residents, is that, nobody told me. I didn't hear about this. Why didn't you come to my house and tell me? And it's been sometimes so frustrating and so difficult for us to get the word out about anything. You know, we ask for people's email address, we ask for their social media, we ask for their telephone number. Are you able to give us a little help in, in getting this outreach to people and more resident engagement in this kind of messaging? Because it's, it's been a, always, always has been a hurdle.
Yeah, part of what we'll do is look at what you have in place, what's available to you, and give recommendations of ways to enhance it, or think of different opportunities. The reality is, in a big, big crisis, you know, local Chicago media is probably going to be out here, as much as you don't want it, they're going to probably be here. And so, you know, they're going to, that's how your community is going to find out. But as far as more, you know, other crises that don't elevate to that level, we'll absolutely look at and give recommendations on different ways to get the word out.
That's great.
Anything to add?
Yep. That's great. So David does a great job with communications. We see it every day on Facebook or in any other mediums, but one of the things that we will look to you, and I know you'll help us with, is when we do have that crisis, not if, but when, because that's just part of life. We don't have any now. How we manage that? Content, reaching out to folks, and the things that you do. And, and we're looking forward to your help in that regard.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your Honor, I'd just like to add, I want to thank trustee Metz Childers, who's in this world, right, for encouraging us to pursue this, because I think we all strive to do the best we can, but we need outside help from time to time, we all do. And this is one of those instances where if we can get some outside help to help us better prepare for that, that doesn't mean it's going to be perfect, but it can be better, and it can be, and can be meaningful. So we're appreciative to all the board members and particularly Rebecca on this one issue.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2491, resolution to approve an agreement for Phase 3 engineering services for 1101 Lake Cook Road Development.
Tyler show for a while here.
Yep.
Excuse me, board. Sorry. As you know, the village recently approved the supportive living facility at 1101, 1121 Lake Cook Road. This four-and-a-half acre subject property will include 147 rental units, which will all meet affordable pricing guidelines. As with any development within the village, the village struck a development agreement with the developer to go over various aspects of building codes, site construction, but it also requires that an outside engineering firm oversee the project, be the eyes and ears for the village, making sure certain codes are met, making sure the plans are met, making sure that inspections are being documented, and so forth. Per the agreement, the village interfered with administrative contract and pay all fees subject to reimbursement by the owner. We typically do this on an annual basis. In early 2024, we've conducted various interviews with engineering consultants for another project, and Gable Hamilton showed exceptional capabilities in this field. Their familiarity with, familiarity with site development and understanding of our local codes, the county, and also state requirements associated with this project makes Gable Hamilton an ideal candidate for the project. Gable Hamilton has submitted a detailed proposal for their services in the amount of $195,530. Keep in mind, this does, this is from start to end, and it's roughly about 22 months that we are planning for this work to take place. We've used Gable Hamilton for similar projects in the past, and we have full faith in them to complete this project. Staff recommends that the village board authorize a resolution to approve an agreement with Gable Hamilton for Phase 3 engineering services for the 1101 Lake Cook Road development in the amount not to exceed $195,530.
This is part of our budget?
This, so we, we have a kind of a catch-all in this, yes. We have a, you know, because this time last year, they were all potential projects. So we have a fund in, in our engineering fund for this work, yes, and next year we are budgeting as a standalone project now that this is moving forward.
And it's all reimbursable.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's all reimbursable.
It seems like this project is, is really moving along now, getting fast-tracked since they got their approval and we started.
Lightning fast, we'll say. Yeah, so they, they came to us this summer, and here we are, approved already. The water main that I brought to you guys two weeks ago starts Wednesday, and we will be out of their way come demolition in October.
Wow.
How many buildings will be demolished in October?
Two. Two with the 11, yeah, 1101 and then 1121 Lake Cook Road, and then a single four-story building will go back.
Any questions for, for Tyler?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Gold?
Larry is in the house.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby?
Here. Yes.
Motion passes.
It's spreading. Jerry, we're going to have to listen very carefully on the future roll calls. Item 2492, resolution to approve an agreement with Phase 3 engineering services for Lake Cook Crossing.
Very similar. This one is also Gable Hamilton. This project, though, is the 10 acres behind Deerbrook Mall. They've got, I think, eight buildings going up. They were also recently just approved through the village board, so we're looking to get our consultant on board as well. They, they als, as well have an development agreement, fully reimbursable by the developer. We do have that kind of catch-all fund this year to cover this year's costs, and then it'll be budgeted in future years, correct?
I noticed they have the same engineer working on Lake Cook Crossing and the other project. Is this going to be problematic in terms of timing and getting the work done?
No, no, we actually did this specifically, the Gable Hamilton.
We thought it was favorable.
Okay.
We intentionally did this.
Yes, and they were actually proposed, should a project west of 1101 come to the board in the future.
For economies of scale, you think about site, you know.
No, no question.
Right, it's, it's, it's project proximity, it's, it's team members close by, and all those things.
Yeah, and there's weekly inspections, they'll be able to hit both in one day.
But schedule-wise, it should work out.
Yeah, yep.
Great.
And they, they have additional staff, should they need to supplement if both crews are, you know, going heavy, they can always supplement their staff.
Great.
Any questions?
Sorry, staff recommends that the village board authorize a resolution to approve an agreement with Gable Hamilton for Phase 3 engineering services for the Lake Cook Crossing in the amount not to exceed $257,250. Sorry, I don't think I gave the cost yet. And this is also 22 months, but a lot more infrastructure-related, hence the different cost.
And this is a pass-through as well? This is reimbursable from the developer?
It's reimbursable.
Yep.
I would move approval.
Second.
All right, Jerry, hold on. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
And Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes, and I'm also here.
Motion passes.
Item 2493.
Can I just ask one thing?
Of course.
Could we raise the temperature? I think I'm, my feet are frostbitten.
Been a motion to raise the temperature.
My brain is frozen.
My interior is freezing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been freezing.
Has to do with Doris closings and, and 800 people in the room and no longer.
Right.
Rattle in the room, everything.
Item 2493, a resolution to award the contract for Meadowbrook subdivision water system improvements.
Yeah, so this, this agenda item 20, 93, as well as the next two, are all related to one project that the Public Works Department will be kind of general contracting. This first one, 93, is a contractor, the subsequent two are material costs, so they, they're all kind of related, but I'll start with 93. So as, as we all know, the Meadowbrook subdivision roadways are all privately maintained. Any pothole patching, patching in general, or resurfacing is the responsibility of the roadway association. Over the last year, they've been looking to resurface their roadway, and they are tentatively scheduled for fall, were tentatively scheduled for fall of 2024. Unfortunately, the water main in this area, which is the responsibility of the village, which was originally structured in 1924, is in, has outlived its life, and we've seen numerous breaks over the last six to eight weeks. This overall project, which has been brought to the board on numerous committee of a whole meetings, most recently in August, needs to be pushed up on an emergency basis. This is only a select few water main segments within the subdivision, but given the proximity of the water main, the, the impacts that it does create, because Meadowbrook subdivision is a single road in and out, this water main is right in the middle of that roadway, and for a couple of the repairs we've had to do in the last few weeks, it did require a complete closure of the roadway. We communicated that with the homeowners association, so that we were able to do that at night and with little impacts, but you throw a resurfacing project on top of an old crusty main, it's, it's very likely that we'll be cutting into that new roadway, which we don't want, nor does the residents who just paid for that road themselves. So in an effort to reduce these water main repairs, we're proposing to install a new water main under Meadowbrook Lane between Margate Road and the northern limit of Meadowbrook Lane. It's about 1,400 feet. Staff has been on contact with the roadway association, who is aware and encouraging the village to move forward with the water main project, even if it means delaying their resurfacing roadway until next year. The scope of the project will draw, involve directionally drilling about 1,400 feet to reduce the impacts to the roadway and the homeowners. It will also include the installation of new water valves, fire hydrants, reconnection of old, or the existing water services, roadway and parkway restoration. Staff has recently worked with an area contractor, North Shore Boring, who we've used in past projects to develop, not only develop this work plan, but to obtain a price in a, in an effort to meet our aggressive schedule. Historically, they have been the most cost-effective contractor for drilling, and also combining their costs and our water main projects, this is a similar price to what we would see in past projects. While this project is not budgeted, staff feels overall program efficiencies in this year's capital improvement program can help absorb the majority, if not all, of the additional expenditure. Staff requests that the board waive the formal bidding procedure and adopt the resolution to award the contract for the Meadowbrook subdivision water main improvements to North Shore Boring at a cost not to exceed $82,000. Happy to answer any questions.
HOA knows not to do the resurfacing until this is done?
They are actually happy that we are looking at this, because they, they felt the impacts, and they don't want to, they, you know, they're, they're, they're all putting money towards that roadway, and the less we touch it, the happier they will be. So they, they are, they are aware of it, and they are overall happy with the, obviously no one likes the curveball of the situation that we're all going through, but they're happy.
But the timing, there's calls before that.
Yes, they are, they originally delayed it for some hound, some homes that were being built in the area, and so that actually kind of worked out in our favor, and now they're delaying it again, should this project move forward.
How long will it take for us to do the work?
We're thinking probably two to three weeks. So we, we are utilizing a contractor to do the directional drilling, in-house staff, as long as we're not thrown into other emergencies. We are planning on doing the remainder of the cut-ins, the connections, to help reduce some of the costs, and also we're buying, we're procuring the material in the next two agenda items, thereby having additional savings from markups from contractors. Again, it's not, not budgeted, but we have seen similar prices in the past for these drilling procedures. I think 2019, we had about a mile in woodland, and this is only 10% more.
And there's offsets in other areas, or efficiencies in other areas where?
Yeah, I don't have the full list in front of me, but particularly the salt building, the Public Works, so we did have delay that due to the excessive salt that we're currently storing. So that was about $300,000. All three agenda items combined are about $260. So there are other fluctuations through our various programs, but that, that's a, that's a big one right there.
And Your Honor, just wanted, with the cooperation of the HOA, that's huge, because they want to see this accomplished as well.
Yep.
When you try to do something like this in a neighborhood that's super disruptive, like this is going to be.
Yes.
The fact that they are supportive and are encouraging us to complete this work, I, I think that's a terrific advance.
Yeah.
And my hope is, none of us will have to deal with this one again.
Please tell them we appreciate their flexibility or patience with us, and we'll get hopefully going on it as soon as we pass these resolutions. So is there, any other discussion on this? Is there a motion? Move to accept the, 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 not to put it up for competitive bids, but to accept the arrangement that we have and proceed. The motion is to, to afford, to accept the resolution to award a contract for Meadowbrook subdivision water system improvements. Is there a second for that?
I would second it, but also we're, we're moving to waive formal bidding on this. I would second it, but also, we're moving to waive formal bidding on this. Are we not?
Which I think is embedded in the resolution, but yes. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
And Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Staying in the same area, item 2494, Resolution to Purchase Water Main Material for the Meadow Brook subdivision water main improvements.
Yep, so as I explained, we're kind of GCing this ourselves, so we've got the contractor now, so now we need to order the material, the pipe. Directional drilling does require a certain pipe, because you're pulling back, you know, 500 feet at a time. It's got to lock in. It's under great stress, so it does require a certain type of pipe. We've been able to find that pipe luckily on the shelf. It's not what we typically spec out, but it is a little bit of higher grade, hopefully giving us a little more longevity under the very difficult circumstances. We most recently used this pipe on Briar Hill Road for similar reasons. Very difficult in and out, no sidewalks, very difficult project. So we've contacted a couple of our vendors. And one vendor, Core and Main, has a material in stock, as I said, and is ready to ship, while the other vendor has a lead time of nearly 12 weeks. The pipe from Core and Main is slightly more expensive, as I explained, but we should get a little bit more longevity on this. It's a little more corrosive resistant. Again, this project's not budgeted, but as we explained, you know, we've got efficiencies elsewhere to absorb much of this project. Staff requests that the board waive the formal bidding procedure and authorize the purchase of water main material for the Meadow Brook subdivision water main improvements from Core and Main at a cost not to exceed $86,730.
Does anyone have any questions for Tyler?
And this is 1,400 feet, so tip-to-tip.
I would move to waive the formal bidding procedure and authorize the purchase.
Second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2495, Resolution to Purchase Miscellaneous Water System Items for the Meadow Brook subdivision water main improvements.
Yeah, so this is the last piece of the pie. So we've got the pipe, we've got the contractor. These are all the fittings, valves, hydrants, water service material. We again checked multiple, a couple of different vendors. Mid-America Water of Wakanda, which is our typical supplier, we perform cost checks against them routinely throughout the year, just with water main costs. And we've received a proposal for all these ancillary items that we are required to get in the amount of $85,330. Staff requests that the board waive the formal bidding procedure and authorize the purchase of miscellaneous water system material for the Meadow Brook subdivision water main improvements from Mid-America Water at a cost not to exceed $85,330.
Questions?
Have we done a project this large, just doing it ourselves without a-
Not in my time here. I'm sure we probably have before. We've got a very capable staff. You know, if there comes a time where they are pulled elsewhere for main breaks or something, and we're slowing down on this, we'll probably have to go back to the well, just to supplement with a contractor to do some of their work.
Are we doing it because the time is of the essence?
Time is of the essence, yes. We need to get done sooner rather later, because we definitely don't want to go into winter with the current arrangement.
Got it.
And we're trying to get done before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Move to waive competitive bidding and to follow through as listed here.
Second.
Move to approve the resolution.
So there's a motion to approve the resolution with the waiver of competitive bidding, and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Just to make it easier for motions, particularly, you know, when you have resolutions in the packet, and this is multiple items, you know, all you have to say is, "I move to approve the resolution." So the waiver is embedded in the resolution, the approval or the award of contracts in the resolution. So it's just all, so it can be a really easy motion, so you don't have to read all that, just move to approve the resolution.
It's just sometimes-
Captures it all.
No, it does, but it's just sometimes you do want to say it. You would like the people who are listening to know that we have considered why we are waiving the competitive bidding process, and there are reasons for it.
So you're absolutely fine to talk about it, just we want to make sure that the-
We don't need it.
That the motions are clear of what we're approving.
Right.
So there's not a discrepancy somehow between, you know, after somebody were to, in this case, it's a waiver. I'm not, you know, we're not worried about it, but if, for example, it's a competitive bidding situation, you don't want somebody from a competitor who doesn't get the contract to say, "Wait a minute, aha, you didn't properly approve the motion or that resolution, because there was no motion to approve the resolution." So just to make it absolutely fine and discussion to talk about it, to explain it, that is certainly your prerogative, and then just on that motion, move to approve the resolution.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you. Item 2496, Resolution Awarding the Purchase of Firewall Equipment Services.
An opportunity for us to practice. This is a resolution to approve purchase with waiver of competitive bidding. I have before you tonight a network firewall project. This is a planned and budgeted project for this year. We are going to be adding additional hardware components to increase our operational resiliency and reduce planned and unplanned instances of downtime. We'll also be adding some additional security feature sets to this equipment, both the pieces that are currently in place and the new pairs that we will be adding. The cost for the project is $41,199.15. This is pricing that is negotiated through our reseller with the manufacturer directly. It is preferable to two separate pre-bid public contracts that we have access to. And there's a small services component included in this project as well, just for efficiency and timeliness purposes. It's always worth it for us to spend just a little bit of extra money and get somebody who's done this before to make sure that we get it right the very first time. Happy to answer any questions.
Before we do this resolution, I feel like sometimes we don't give you guys enough credit. Maybe you're not here as frequently as other departments are, but you do a tremendous job of keeping us safe from an IT perspective, and keeping us rolling, and making sure that we're doing the right things, state-of-the-art IT stuff. So thank you for all of your help in doing what you do. So.
IT stuff.
Well, sorry, I'm a certain age. I can't say anything better.
Well, and over the last couple of years, your department has spearheaded a whole lot of efficiencies and upgrades in our processes that allow our residents to pay things different ways, that allow our residents to communicate with us in different ways. And it's been amazing, and it's what we have to do. It's great. Thank you.
Every project's an IT project now.
Yeah.
So that goes under the heading IT stuff. So now we go into the resolution. Are there any questions for Matt on this resolution? Is there a motion?
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
I have to advance the page, sorry. Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Items for discussion by the mayor and board of trustees were, I think, locked in, but tell me if I'm wrong, for committee of a whole on October 16th from 3:00 to 6:00. Is everyone available?
Your maybe.
The one maybe. All right, so let's plan on it. Please put on your calendars, October 16th, 3:00 to 6:00, for committee of a whole. Harvest Fest is Saturday, September 21st on Park Avenue. We will have a full day. Farmer's Market from 7:00 to 12:00, Tata Truck from 9:00 to 12:00, our inaugural car show from 2:00 to 5:00, and live music from 5:00 to 9:00. Thanks in advance for staff and Justin, I know you're probably taking the lead on this one, for putting this together, and all your hard work, Public Works, and everyone involved in putting this together. I have nothing else. Ken?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Anyone? Nothing? All right. I will call, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please adjourn. Thank you, everybody.